All right, good evening. Let's get a start on this, please. Ms. Henry, would you make a roll call on the Committee of the Whole for August 13, 2024, please?
All right. Alderman Mims. I'm here. Alderman Hayden?
Here.
Alderman Kresek?
Here.
Alderman Emerson?
Excused.
Alderman Scott?
Excused.
Alderman Van Busker?
Here.
Alderman Walters?
Here.
Alderman Azier?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum.
Alderman Myers?
Here.
Alderman Garza?
Not here. Still have a quorum, yeah. All right, thank you, Ms. Henry. Need a motion for the approval of the July 16, 2024 Committee of the Whole meeting minutes. Go ahead with your motion, Mr. Myers. Second by Ms. Mims. All right, call a roll.
Alderman Mims? Mayor? Alderman Myers?
I'm yes, too.
Gotcha. Alderman Walters?
Yes.
Alderman Azier? Alderman Hayden?
Yes.
Alderman Kresek?
Yes.
Alderman Van Busker?
Yes. Motion, Madam President, please. Give me just a second, I'm gonna have to dial this down a little bit. It's a little bit too loud tonight. Ms. Kresek, would you give me a test count for five?
Testing, testing, testing.
And Mr. Azier, since your voice carries so loudly, would you also give me a count? Give me a count from one to five?
One, two, three, four, five.
Perfect, okay. Ms. Henry, can you hear us okay?
I can, very loud.
Very good, okay. I think we may have it set this time. All right, fiscal year 2024, 2025 Department Budget Presentations. First up, Court Judge Tracy Phan. What do you have for us?
Good evening. The budget this year...
You can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
No. You're gonna have to move it a lot closer to you.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Okay. The budget for the court this year has pretty much stayed much the same as it has in years past. The majority of our expense is personnel costs and service insurance and that sort of thing. See, things you would need is staff and office, you know, office supplies, paper, that type of thing, computers or software. The only thing that's additional this year is since we're getting the metal detectors installed, we will have two security guards that man that on court days. And that's additional cost to our budget this year. But other than that, everything's pretty much the same.
Anybody got a... Anybody have any questions on your presentation so far? Well, that was easy enough.
Is that it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, I did want to point out that one of the things we've done differently this year is on each of them, you'll see goals for the department. Can you hear me? Goals for the department along with performance measures. You've already seen on the personnel summary side each time with full-time employees. The other one is on the backside of that, typically of your front page. You'll notice expenditures for the past four budget years. Those are there as well. Shows you what between the budget and the actual, budget and actual for both '22 and '23, and then projected for '24, along with the analysis as far as a pie chart and a line chart. This show you where the funding is being spent. Most of the time, it's probably gonna be more personnel services with general fund items basically on there. So, some other items for your analysis of the departments.
Bill Van Busker.
Thank you, Judge. I did want to ask, the goals that you have, what is it going to require to implement those goals?
Oh, for like the show-me courts? Well, we're, we are already in the implementation stage of that. We imported all of our warrants from the previous system into the show-me court system. I think there's a few thousand maybe we still have to do, but the majority of them have been imported. We're expecting that by the end of this year, next year, this budget that we're working on now, that maybe at the end of that, we can cut that expense for the computer software down because we won't, we will no longer be using that portion of it once we get everything imported into show-me courts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Go on to the Police Department, Captain.
Good evening. Introduce yourself in case somebody doesn't know you.
Good evening, I'm Captain, good evening, I'm Captain Dion Harper. Chief Kuhl can't be here tonight, so I'm gonna fill in for him. So, I would say for our budget this, for FY '25, the, as Mr. Hodges mentioned, our biggest increase is in personnel, mostly due to the pay point, pay plan. And I know there was a pretty good hike in insurance and workers' comp. Couple of new items we have for this budget year is we have spun up a K-9 unit. And we will be putting in a Flock camera system, a license plate reader system, and that'll be grant funded. But it is in there as an expense item.
Anyone?
Sure.
Anyone?
That's me.
Mr. Walters?
Thank you. I just, I picked up part of what you said there at the end on the camera system. What is this for?
It is a series of cameras that are put in at different areas around the city, high traffic, high crime areas.
Oh, okay. Intersections and so forth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Sounds like a good idea. You've, they've got good track record, I assume, in other towns that they've been using?
Yes, very popular in other towns.
Fantastic. There's a lot of people be happy to hear that because I get a lot of calls from people who are very upset about people reckless driving, shaking their fist at them and other types of signs and spitting at them. It's bad, you know? I think you guys are probably aware of it. Make them behave themselves. That's what we need. How many officers do we have now?
We don't have any changes in personnel numbers from last year as far as our total authorized staffing. Are you referring to the two, the change in two positions from patrol officer to detective?
Yes.
So, what that is, is we assign officers to the investigations and back to patrol as our staffing allows and where our operational needs are. That's, so that is fluid even throughout the year. The number of detectives we may have assigned to investigations versus patrol. So, as we hire more officers, they finish FTO training, field training, then we can plus up in investigations. So, it's fluid.
So, when you say you have 62 officers, or is that 62 positions?
That is 62 positions total.
How many we got filled of those 62?
I think we have one dispatcher and maybe four police officer positions that are unfilled at this, as of today.
Okay. Are they in the, in the works of being filled? I know you're constantly looking.
Oh, we are constantly looking, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, thank you, that is very enlightening.
Hey, I have a real quick question. When you're talking about cameras, I want to make sure that everybody understands what kind of cameras, just make sure they don't have a different idea than what they really are.
Yeah, I am not an expert in it, but I know, they are not like a live feed camera. They are a license plate reader camera. So, they might send us a hit on, say, a stolen auto.
Right, and this is why I wanted that, because I believe Mr. Walters was thinking they were the kind of cameras for red lights and stuff like that, and that's not what they're for.
No, I didn't, I didn't realize that. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to clear that up, because those cameras probably, if there's a, I don't get to sit up here and tell you all night long about all the problems.
Well, I know there's been some court decisions.
Right, yeah, so.
But these...
These are to notify us when there's a hit that there's a vehicle with that license number in that area that's wanted.
Oh, okay. So, actually it's for warrant work, pretty much. Glad to hear that, too.
Ms. Kresek.
Uh, yeah. I see that you took down two patrol officers, but how many do you need to fill the, all the positions? How many more? How many empty positions should we have, do we have?
We have, well, like I said, we did not lose any police officer position. You could really group detectives and patrol officers together.
Right, you're talking total, but I'm talking specifically to patrol officers.
We are down, I think we have five officers in different police academies right now. And we have, I think, four patrol officer positions vacant.
Okay.
So, as, like I said, as those officers are hired and trained, then we can transfer some into investigations. They need personnel there and we can also meet the needs, you know, first-line needs on the street.
What are you finding is issue in finding people to fill the positions? Is it...
Well, it's a combination of many things. We're not unique to any of the police agency in the, or in the country. Just the general, I don't know, perspective of police in recent years. It's just not a position that a lot of people are wanting to go to, it seems like.
Well, yeah. With all the crime, it is hard to fill in people. And so, does the openings, openings in positions add to some of that overtime? It's, there's a lot of overtime.
Yes, yeah.
A lot of overtime.
Yeah.
We could be hiring people.
Yes.
So, how many positions do we need to fill in the whole department?
I think that we have five positions total that need to be filled.
Is that all?
Mm-hmm. We've been working, I say, I've been working in to fill detention positions, and we are finally, as of yesterday, completely filled there. But I know other officers, Captain Rogers, have been working really hard on the police officers especially, just because we are so far down.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Dion, I think last, Captain, I think last year we were in double digits of vacancies, so I think it was almost 14.
Yes.
So, this past year, and just kind of give you an idea of what it takes to onboard an officer, especially a newly trained officer, they gotta go through the academy, go through your interview process, which could take up to a couple of weeks, which includes a, not only a fitness test, but also a mental test. So, you're, this past year, each time we're trying to look to onboard someone, you're talking not only time spent by our employees to do that onboarding, but also money spent from the city side to do that. And at one point, we were almost 14 to 15, and now we're closer to five. So, that's, kudos, but that's 10 people to get on this pass. And that does include those who may have left and then backfilled. So, it's been a switch on that, too, as well. So, I think that kind of, then the question you asked is, what is it that we've been running into? Because our recruiting has been from everything, from going to classes at universities to going to different academies to, to putting out programs around the city, actually around the region to recruit officers, going all the way down to Warrensburg to their police academy as well, to try to bring who we can on here. And in the meanwhile, we've had both, two local jurisdictions, both larger than ours, increase their salaries quite a bit, which impacts us all, too, as far as recruiting.
Yeah.
So, has there been any consideration for maybe increasing the force because of the level of crime everywhere? Right now, it's just pretty much the same numbers.
Yeah, it has been. One of the things we have is the staffing study that will be coming up in the next couple of months. But as far as that, the other thing is just been trying to get the staff that we have already within the budget itself. This is probably the first time you've really been able to see the true impact of your salary study, because we haven't been fully staffed to really see what that is. So, this is probably the closest we've been between the two largest departments, which is police and public works, as far as our total impact of what that, those staff, what those salary increases were. Kind of give us a better idea of what we would do financially impacting. And we still got some vacancies, so, oh, definitely, we're looking at trying to increase it, but we want to figure out how can we pay for what we have and then continue on from there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Mims, did you hear something? Were your light off yet?
I did, oh, I did.
You want to turn on any more?
I did have one, but it's, I already knew most of the answer to it. And I guess the part I want to clarify is that in keeping up with the stats, as you know, I do read Monday through Friday. I rest on the weekends. But everybody is looking for officers, and we had some people that was in the academy, and we lost some people that we had in the academy. And so, it took, it left our numbers basically where we were. And when you look at the crime, crime is everywhere. It's not just here. As a matter of fact, I just wanted to share going down Blue Ridge, not on this side, on the other side of 87th Street, there was a car, a car chase that had several, had your officers in Kansas City, and they hit five or six cars on the way. That wasn't in Raytown, that was in Kansas City, and the car airborne into the Save-A-Lot store. So, what I'm saying is, when they did get to all of that commotion that was going on and the people that were injured, it's everywhere. So, it's not just, just Raytown. And I understand, you know, people being on edge, but when you look at the stats here and you look at the stats pretty much around us and in the others jurisdictions, everybody's hurting. So, I just wanted to share that I did attend a meeting partly for the academy, I didn't want to say it too loud, from my, from the stuff that I normally would do. And it's been, it's been contentious, because everybody's in the same pot and at the same pool trying to get officers. And so, I guess the ones, the best ones, and that's not just them, that's the fire departments too, where the money is, wherever the money is, that's what you're losing. And then a lot of people don't want to be police officers no more. I was gonna say, I didn't know why, but I'm stopping.
Mr. Azier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a couple of comments, but first I want to say that going over the budgets since 1998, I've seen quite a change in the way we do our budgeting. Not so much in the way we budget, but in the way we present the budget. And I want to say it's gotta be attributed to our finance director. I know that you oversee the budget for the whole city and, and the format, the changes we made over the past, you know, 27 years have really been gradually gotten better and better, and I think you did an outstanding job. Same for Tracy Phan's budget, but I know our finance director was an overseer of that, so, you know, coups to you for that. The, I want to share something in your, the budget from the very first page, items number about six, your goals, under your goals, it says to improve public safety through enforcement and proactive efforts, and the goal to foster community support and involvement through communication, public events, and special activities. And, and what I want to share with you is that, and I know over the past five years, you know, I at least twice, maybe three times, offered an amendment to add more police officers, and it's been a real effort. And I know over the past year, we were able to do that. I think Chief Kuhl made a, you know, a real effort to do that, and for whatever reason, we were able to do that. And that's a real important. But of all the departments in the city, I think probably the two most visible are the Parks Department certainly, but especially the Police Department. And, and one of the things that I want to share with you is that a lot of people in Raytown have the cameras with a device called Ring. And, and associated with that, the people that have those can get online and talk to each other. And it's really quite interesting, if you follow that, you follow what's going on in Raytown. And they like to talk about what was stolen. They talk about watching each other's backs. And if you follow through, the dialogue over this summer is, seems to be a major increase in theft of cars and, and they talk about, you know, what they do in broad daylight. And there were comments that were made, and I think partially because if we're short police officers and an alderman like Alderman Azier says, well, I want to, you know, increase the budget for more officers, they see that on television. And the public knows what we have or don't have, or think, think they know anyway, may not even be accurate, but they talk about, they talk about our police department, and they are doing that, and they talk about what's being stolen. And it seems to be, what I've seen, a lack of, of, they feel like, you know, Raytown's less secure, okay? And they're talking about the, the lack of police officers. And so, when we look at, you know, your goals, fostering communication, I'm sharing this with you because it's one of your goals, that we need to be able to communicate with the public, maybe do a better job. Maybe we're doing a good job, but they're talking about it. If we're adding officers or things the Police Department is doing to improve on, on, on public safety and security, because here, I hear neighborhoods talking about, you know, we need more crime watch, neighborhood crime watch, and they're talking about vigilante committees. And this is floating around the airways here in Raytown. So, I suggest maybe that's something you, you watch if we truly want to communicate with the public, and they're saying things that aren't accurate, or they're saying things that maybe you don't know are taking place. I would think it would be to your benefit or the city's benefit if, if we paid attention to that. And I have, I can, later than I, if you want to see on my phone, I took a picture of several of these, but there's a lot of them out there, it's not like one or two people. So, that's just a suggestion. I do, I do believe that, kind of like Alderman Mims said, you know, crime is a problem all over this country, especially more associated when you see the number of homeless. And, and they seem to be a part of this picture, too. So, the challenges may be greater than it was 20 years ago or 10 years ago, because the amount of homeless has increased, especially in the last four years. It went down the previous four years a little bit, but went up quite a bit over the last four years. So, it's a challenge for you, and, and I, as an alderman, recognize that, I'm sure the other aldermen do, and I can't speak for them, but it's a, because we're so visible and, and public safety is, I believe, and over the years I've run for office, the number one thing I've heard from the public going door-to-door, you know, we want a safe community, we want safe streets. So, it's always been number one, it's never gonna change. And, and so, that's the importance of our police department, why we want it to be good. So, anyway, again, I appreciate, you know, what you have, what we've done. I think that this board has always been really supportive of our police department. We've never talked about, you know, cutting police officers, but I think we want the same thing the public does. So, I share that with you. If you want to see what I'm talking about, if you don't know what I'm talking about...
I do, I do, so maybe on the next break, we can talk, and I can arrange to get those.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill Van Busker.
Thank you, sir. It sounds like there may be some bargains to be had in Save-A-Lot now, huh?
No, they didn't have any bargains.
They might after that.
We had a nice sale.
After that incident. Anyway, first thing I wanted to mention, in the goals and achievements that are listed, a couple of things have kind of stuck out at me that I think are pretty important. And the patrol of residential and business areas, I think, are vital. That's where a lot of citizens make contact with our officers or should be. And I know certainly that's been the case in the past, and I don't know whether, how much of that we're able to do, but I, the more of it, the better, because visibility, not only to our citizens, but the bad guys, is awfully important. And when the officers are out patrolling the neighborhoods and the businesses, certainly they can see a lot of the, the problems or potential problems that are there. And so, that would community, would foster community support and involvement, it would have do, do some of those things that you're, you're talking about in your, in your goals. And improve public safety through enforcement and proactive efforts to foster community support and involvement through communication, public events, and special activities, but, but that's part of it certainly, but I think the community patrols and business patrols are certainly vital to that. And there's a question, kind of a follow-up question I have with that. I guess the impact officers, are they dispatched from the street or from, from headquarters?
Well, it depends what they're doing that day. They do a lot of different things. Sometimes they're out in the field, sometimes they are, they, they have investigative, like detective-type roles as well, so they may be working on case files in the office, where they might have to go out on something from the station. It just depends. They field a wide variety of tasks for us.
Well, something that was mentioned as far as the numbers of officers that, you know, we've been adding officers every year for several years. We've been providing the funding that the Police Department has requested. We're still doing that. Fortunately, we've been able to do it. And so, it's not that we haven't provided the funding to add whatever officers, departments requesting, because we have been doing that, and we are doing that, and we'll continue to do that as long as we have the funds to do it. And I think certainly public safety is one of our highest priorities in our city. The, I did notice, one of the aldermen asked about the patrol positions. I noticed there was a couple reductions in patrol positions and a couple of additions in detective. Is that, are those connected in some way?
Yes, so, like I said, there, it, it could change depending on the needs of the department and staffing mostly. So, when we are really short staffing in patrol, then we don't assign as many detectives to the detective unit, because we need to answer calls first and foremost, 911 calls. But as we get officers hired and trained to where they can operate on their own, then we increase the staffing on the street and patrol so that we can start pulling a couple over to investigation. So, it's, we haven't lost any, it's the overall total number of officers and detectives, and it changes just as our staffing changes and as our needs change.
Are we utilizing, are still utilizing outside agencies or services for some of our investigative work?
I would say very little at this point. We were able to take all that back.
Very good, that's good. I noticed on page nine of 30... I noticed on page nine of 30, gosh, what is it? 37, whatever it is. In the 25 budget, there's a, it says tow services 12,000. There wasn't anything in 24. What is that specifically?
So the contract that we have with the towing service expires in May of 2025. So where it was free before, we've never had to pay. We will have to pay starting in May of next year. So we budgeted to pay for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that, appreciate that. Thank you for the job. The department's doing. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor.
I know we talked about staffing a little bit, but I don't want to put you on the spot. But what's the DOJ recommend for optimum staffing, I guess? If the city were to win the Powerball?
I don't know what it is. I know there's a few different ways to calculate that. Some of it is just, you can, you know, do it on per capita or work based as far as activity. I don't know, I think we're just anxiously waiting to see what the staffing study shows later this year.
Okay, and then I caught something, I don't know, it's just minor housekeeping. Page nine and page 10. Page nine under professional services and then page 10 under dues and memberships. You guys have notary renewal twice. It's 50 bucks, but I don't know if that was on purpose.
Yeah, it's two different parts of the notary renewal. One of them is the renewal dues or registration. And then the other one is actually for the stamp for the supplies.
Okay. And then the last one is page 12 for the electricity expense. It says averaging monthly 4,500 and you have a budget of 4,500. If it's monthly 4,500, should it be 54,000? Or is it 4,500 bucks annually for the tower?
It's, it would be 4,500, it's not 45,000 for the year. It's 4,500 for the year. So that was, I'm not, I don't have page numbers here, so I'm not sure where. Yeah, it should be the 4,500 for a year.
Yeah, I was going to say if it is over 50,000, that thing's drawing some electricity. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
A lot of electricity. Mr. Walters?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have just a few comments real quickly. First of all, I agree with the comment Ms. Mim's made. The main problem is that there are not as many people who want to be in police business anymore. And when I see stuff on the news, like there was, there was an officer, I think is in critical condition now, who was in Ferguson the last couple of nights. He got blindsided in a peaceful riot, basically. Somebody just came up and just hit him as hard as he can. And anybody that's ever been in a fight or played sports knows you prepare for hits in certain sports especially. And if you don't, you can get hurt really bad. And there seems to be no handle on it. And personally, my point of view is I see it as a permissiveness in society as a whole. If we see cars with, I saw one today, three years old, on a license tag. I know in Lee's Summit, you're pulled over for that. Your tags ripped off your car and you get a ticket for it. I don't know if we're enforcing it here, but we need to start doing that. We need to send that message. We don't tolerate this type of behavior anymore. And it will seep down to those who like to get violent when they see that they can get away with stuff. I think it's also very important, I'm glad, I believe, the response time, at least the ones I'm experiencing, from what I'm hearing from people in my ward is the response time's pretty good on things. And I think that is extremely important to have the faith of the public in your, on your side. If they feel they're being ignored or nobody responds anyway, they will quit calling. I can tell you that from conversations I've had with people. The only other thing is I know I've talked, had some conversations in our, in our goal setting session, we talked about doing traffic calming measures. And I believe there's some ways that we can help slow down people without the fact that you have to have a man there to do it, simply by the way that you do upgrades to your streets. And some of them are really quite simple. But they can help in that regard. And it frees up your men to do other things besides just look around for speeders. Because the traffic calming that I have in mind, I won't go into it now because that's not the subject right now. But you don't have to tell them to slow down, they will. That'll tear the car apart. And it's, it's very simple. It works.
Okay. Anybody else? Turn on your microphone, please.
I just want to clarify one piece that I went back to the state and on you all's behalf, I just want to share about when you're talking about the tags. And they supposedly had put it in. So you probably want to work with your state representative or whoever because they've been trying to pass it where you put the taxes into your car payment. So that these people that are, they're trying to get to work, most of them that I know that I've met, that they can have that in their payment and won't have to go through the expiration date on their tags. That's number one. The other piece that I have been trying to share and get it out there is the people that have the paper tags. And I do, when I see them, they allow me to explain it to them. They can call DMV in Jefferson City. And as long as those, your license don't expire or your tags haven't expired, you can go on a payment plan through Jefferson City to pay that amount of your taxes and still have, and they'll put it in the system so that they won't be harassed about having the paper tags. I just want to share that.
That's what I'm talking about.
But I just wanted to share that.
It's not a harassment. It's not a harassment of people.
No, 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 I didn't say. But what I'm saying is there are certain ones that are going through that. Not just, I'm just saying the people that you're doing it, but it's happening to people about their tags. And I just wanted to share that so that people would know that for the record.
It started with COVID and it quit enforcing it back then. I know myself because I had expired tags on my car. I wasn't even aware of it. I was buried at work without enough staff to get the stuff done, working very long hours. And I got pulled over and they said, well, we're not going to write a tag. This was in Kansas City. They weren't going to write a ticket for it. And I think all the cities followed that suit.
I'm just sharing the information for those that are going through it. That's all I'm doing.
Okay, but the point is they need to get it corrected.
Again, they're trying to correct it in Jefferson City. That's where the problem is starting with it.
They've been doing that for three years.
Well, I'm not there.
Okay, this conversation about this is not even in this realm right now.
I just wanted to give the information.
I understand. And I appreciate you letting people know that so that they know they can do that. I really do appreciate that a lot, Ms. Mim. That is one way for some people that can't afford it to get it done. So thank you for that information. So, all right. Captain, I believe that's it. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
You guys do a great job. And just so people will know, I've sworn in some of these officers that we've hired that are already licensed. We will not lower our standards just to try to meet the numbers. We will make sure we maintain our standards. And someday, someday after the staffing study, we'll see where we are with how many officers and all that. And I hope that everybody be prepared to do what we need to do to bring that up to snuff. So Dave Turner, Parks Department.
Good evening, everybody. Glad to be here. You can see our goals and achievements. There is one on our second achievement there that is a 53rd Street grant project. We are making good progress on those grants right now, the grant projects. If you look at the second page, revenues versus expenditures, you can see at the very, at the bottom of the bar graph there, our expenditures have been exceeding our income. This is a very interesting point that we need to look. If you go, switch all the way back to the very last page on this, you look at the very bottom right hand number. That bottom is our fund balance. And as we are approaching and tackling these big projects that are millions of dollars, at the end of next year, we are going to have the lowest fund balance that we've had since I've worked there, 20 plus years. So this is a serious issue. We do have it in the budget to have a election to ask for a park sales tax. We will sunset. We need to have a park sales tax passed before November of 2025 or we will be in a literal income gap. You know, March of 2026 is when that runs out. So November of 2025 is the very last possibility to not have a funding gap in our budget. And hopefully we can get it before then so we can make some moves and we're not, our back is not against the wall so bad. Okay, going through this, if you look at our third page of our budget on the park fund there, again, there's a bar graph extending horizontally, just tons and tons of funds that we are, capital expenses that are funded through the grants that we have secured. So we're taking on in this budget year almost $4 million of grant projects. And the outlay on that is going to be $500,000 from the parks budget. You know, to accomplish all those $4 million with the projects, our actual outlay is just going to be 500,000 at the end of the, when all is said and done. That's our match. We can go through here, our personnel has gone up. Again, do the salary survey. We've been trying to watch all of our expenses as tightly as possible. Nothing costs cheaper now than it did even two years ago. But we are doing the best we can. For other capital expenses that we are not getting funds for, we do have a replacement of a truck and I think some carpet for the park office. So we're not doing a big, big things that we don't have additional funding to accomplish. If anybody has any specific questions, I would be happy to do my best to answer those.
All right, very good. Anybody have any questions for Dave? I do want to say thank you a lot for how hard you guys reached out there and made our dollars go as far as you can. And number two, getting all the grants that we've been able to get through the government, federal government to help do some of the stuff that we've needed to do. I know a lot of conversations and stuff had been with Mr. Cleaver and a few other folks to make that happen, so.
Yeah, it's four and five years worth of effort to get here.
Larita Hayden.
I just wanted to clarify and reiterate that for the last four or five years, we've been getting these grants or trying to, trying to get the grants and finally got them, get them. But one of the things is that you, that you explained, I think, in one of our meetings is that since we've gotten those grants, it's going to be harder to get grants. So that, we can't rely on that as a funding source. But at the same time, we do know that our, the tax is going to sunset. So we just need to make sure that we put it on everybody's mind that we're probably going to have to pay that in order to just stay alive. Because to go from a million, 1.2 million to 284,000, that's a little scary. And I just want to say to you, Dave, that you and the park board have done a great job of using the money and trying to maximize the grant money and the money that we have. But we are going to need that, continue to get that sales tax money so that we can continue to have good parks.
When we update all these facilities, we still have to maintain them. You know, we still have to take care of them and keep them in the best working order that we can.
And I don't know if 284,000 is going to be able to do that. So that's my point.
It will not match a grant. It will not match a grant again.
Mr. Mayor.
Dave, I just have one question. What, on page 23 to 37 miscellaneous contractual, what's AI tracking program?
Okay, that is, actually, it's geo fencing. You've probably heard of geo fencing. Where they take phone data and say, how many people have been through a park? How many people have gone down a road? Wherever you put the geo fence, you can set the boundaries. And then you can gather some information on the people that are going through that or taking advantage of that area. As a demonstration, between July of 2022 and July of 2023, Carnegie Park had 97,000 individuals go through there. That's not repeat. That's 97,000 people came through Carnegie Park in that one year time span. Some of them were from Chicago and Dallas. And so we can find out information like that. It was obviously, they were there for a family reunion or, you know, things like that. But it was interesting to also see how many people come from Liberty on a regular basis. You know, and either walk to meet people or play tennis at Carnegie Park. So it kind of shows that the areas that we're maintaining and some of the businesses in Raytown do have quite a draw, you know, in the metro area. And that we are serving a wider public than just the Raytown citizens. Three times as much, basically.
Cool, that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dave, appreciate it. We will now move on to finance. Michael Graham and John.
So one of the things I want to do before I get started here and Alderman Asia, I'll show you the brains to the formatting, right here next to me, John. Want to give him credit on that. What drove this is two things. One, this is the budget application or model inside of our N Core system, which they've had for several years. The other thing is we filed the GFOA budget review, which ends up being an achievement award if we work it right. This is kind of positioning ourselves for that review of that budget itself. We do several things that we add to that budget that you don't see after we take it from you, the approval, and then we add certain things to it and push it on. One of the things I want to do is just present to you a lot of the stuff that we do actually push on, such as the goals and objectives and the performance measures. So that's a key thing. I just give John kudos where it goes. What I want to present to you tonight is the finance area, the sewer area, and also the TIF area. Now, the TIF's not going to have very much information to it. It's pretty standard. So on the third page here of our packet, start off with first, we're only increased, our budget decreased actually 5.7% this year. So on the personnel side in the finance area, we've got all the positions filled. And at this point, the one thing I wanted to point out to you, and this goes for all the budgets, we actually have 2,088 workdays this year. That's how the calendar fell. We had more workdays than normal. So that usually you'll see a budget with 2,080. And I'm used to going through and counting the actual workdays because at the end of the day, we're going to pay for it one way or another. And that would cause our budgets to go over. So it's 2,088 hours this year. The other piece is, and I think the judge or PD might have pointed this out, is that we took a big increase in worker comp insurance this year. And the Public Works and the Police Department had the bulk of it. We do have some in this budget of ours. The other item we took a big jump on was general insurance. So I think the property market's finally catching up with everybody. And they're spreading their losses throughout with everybody, too. As far as our budget's concerned, in the personnel area, we've got minimal change. In the supplies area, we've probably dropped right at 10.7%. What we did as far as this budget's concerned, we dropped temporary, temporary agencies. And we had an ad hoc consultant that we also dropped. Both those totaled about 20,000 each, or total thousand total. And on the capital side, we purchased all the copiers and stuff for our area. So that's down another 10. And this sounds kind of minute when you compare it to everybody else's budget, but this is, this is our area. Going over to sewer, and we've got a separate graph in there for this, also separate goals. On the revenue side, you'll see, you'll see a presentation from John coming up here on the sewer rates. And that's on the agenda tonight. We basically held it flat in the budget from last year's rate. We just kept it as far as that's concerned. Then once we understand where you guys are going to want to land on it, the final iteration of the budget will have the full amount of the increase or whatever we decide. Far as other revenues are concerned, interest income's going to go down slightly on everybody's budget also, or for overall. What we're finding on long-term investments is it's starting to go down. I think as the Fed probably goes down, so will the investment side of it. So that's going to drop some. Overall, on the expense side, on this particular, the sewer itself. Overall, on the expense side, on this particular, the sewer itself in your packet, it also had Public Works included into it. And Rob will present Public Works next week. But as far as the finance side, personnel is up about one hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And what's happening here is I'm bringing a clerk in early before I have my lead sewer clerk retire so that she can train them thoroughly. I'd rather have somebody with knowledge training the person rather than a group thing where maybe somebody knows a piece here and here and here. I'd rather just have the real person train them. So I'm going to have a few months with the new clerk and the old one going out. We had an increase of about a hundred and nineteen thousand related to our sewer contracts from Little Blue in Kansas City. Both of them usually go up about five percent annually. The other piece in this area is the debt service. And we've got State of Missouri bonds that we've gotten, or State of Missouri financing. And that's coming about a slight decrease of about thirteen thousand dollars. As we're paying forward, we'll see more principal being paid. But the, the interest, of course, decreases as the value out there is gone or left out. The one thing I did want to point out too is that on the bonds or on the state refinancing, we've got three different bonds, which you've heard about, a two thousand and seven, two thousand and six, and a two thousand and twenty-one. The two thousand and seven is going to retire January first of twenty-eight. The two thousand and six will retire in July first of twenty-six. And the twenty-one will retire July first of twenty-seven. My last piece that I'm going to talk about here is the TIF. That's on the very last page or next, last two pages. You'll see a slight increase in the revenue, and that's based off of the sales tax. When the sales tax raised so much money, actually is transferred over to the TIF for debt service payments. Major expenses in the TIF area is going to be debt service, principal and interest payments. And this TIF debt is going to be due February the first, twenty thirty-one. So we're starting to pay more principal and less interest as we go on this one also.
Excuse me, you haven't been recognized or had your microphone on. Are you finished, sir?
Yeah.
Mr. Asia, you're recognized.
Just a quick question. So the rainfall goes into the sanitary, the Little Blue Valley sanitary system. Is that correct?
I think it, John can answer that one probably better.
Then we have to clean that water up.
Referring to some INI in our sewer from increased and from the rainwater?
It does.
It could be. As you increase and put more money into INI, you will see some droppage of the flow during the rains. But I don't know if you could correlate both of them and say, it rained, you know, four inches today. Did we get four inches more and flowed in Little Blue Valley?
I was thinking that they, in the past, that when it, whatever water goes in the sanitary sewer system or the, or seeps into it, increases our bill.
That is correct.
And I know that we are probably way ahead of our rain this year than where we were a year ago. So I'm wondering when you calculate your budget, are you accounting for the additional rain?
As of about three weeks ago, I was given about five point five percent increase from last year with Little Blue Valley. Kansas City's pretty, pretty standard. They bill us based on our actual. So I would say an average of five and a half percent.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And don't forget too, we've been on a project for several years now to seal some of these so we don't have that problem. So that, that will in the long run, that will benefit all our taxpayers quite a bit. Okay, we're coming up, we're actually past seven o'clock. Does anybody else got any questions before we adjourn from this? All right. Have a motion to adjourn. Ms. Mims has a motion, second by Mr. Meyer. Call the roll, Ms. Henry.
Alderman Mims?
Yes.
Alderman Myers?
Yes.
Alderman Hayden?
Yes.
Alderman Krezak?
Yes.
Alderman Nembusker?
Yes.
Alderman Walters?
Yes.
Alderman Asia?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
You are adjourned at seven oh three PM. Be back in here at ten.